I'd like to open tonight's meeting, Tuesday, October 13th, 2020, of the Gloucester City Council. This meeting is recorded by video and audio in accordance with state open meeting law, consistent with the governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and banning gatherings of more than 25 people. This meeting will be conducted by remote participation. Additionally, all votes taken by the city council during this and future remote meetings will be by roll call vote. If you're calling in on a phone and you can press star nine to request to speak. If you're watching on a computer or device, there is a raise hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications to be recognized to speak. And my timing is perfect because I see that Council President LeBlanc is on the call. And I've done the announcement and if you're ready to take over, that would be great.
Yeah, that'd be great. Yeah, my internet's real slow. I don't know why. All right, so we are at oral communications?
Counsel, I haven't announced who's here yet.
Okay, I'll take over. Did you read the announcement before the meeting?
I did, yep.
All right, perfect. So we'll start off with, I'm just going to go in no particular order. What I have on my screen, I have Counselor Peck, Counselor LeBlanc, Counselor Cox, Counselor Gilman, Counselor McCarthy, Counselor Holmgren, Counselor O'Hara, Counselor and Counselor Nolan. So we have a Counselor Memhard is not with us this evening. He is out on a procedure that he's having done, so we wish him the best. And we have eight out of nine counselors here this evening. So before we start our regularly scheduled meeting, we haven't done one of these in a while, I would like to offer a moment of silence for Counselor Gilman's mom, Gloria M. Cohen. So if we can all take a moment of silence for Counselor Gilman's mom, that would be great. And Abell, if you want to say something short about your mom after the moment of silence, feel free, but we'll give it a quick moment now and then you'll have the floor after. All righty, thank you, Abell. Would you like to say anything?
My mom was awesome. She loved Gloucester. She loved it here. She loves our community and I'll miss her, but thank you. It meant a lot to me.
I know, thank you. We all don't see eye to eye at the council sometimes, but we're all family, so.
We are, thank you. Thanks, counselors.
My pleasure. Madam Clerk, we have the next order of business, please.
The next order of business is oral communications.
Thank you. The public shall have every opportunity, every regularly scheduled meeting to be heard under oral communications on matters not appearing on the agenda. Oral communications shall be allowed. Any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to city business to appear before the council, state their problem without debate, and the matter shall be referred to the proper agency through the office of the mayor. The resident will be notified within two week period relative to disposition of the same, and a copy shall be forwarded to the city council. Person speaking under oral communication shall be limited to three minutes each, and the council president shall not allow any complaints as any individual performance. So is there anybody that would like to speak under oral communications? If you're calling in on a device, I mean a telephone, you press star nine. And if you're on a computer or laptop or device, you can press, there's a raise hand button. All righty, we have. Hannah, can you hear me?
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know that I was here.
All right, perfect.
Okay.
All right, we're going to keep you, I'm going to keep you right where you're at. So how's that?
Great.
All right, I'm going to mute you, but we're going to get through our oral communications and we'll get, we'll get right back to you.
Sure.
All right, is there anybody? Let's see here. Is there anybody else that would like to speak under oral communications? All righty, seeing none. Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business, please?
Next order of business is confirmation of new appointments.
Counselor Nolan. Sean, can you hear me? All right, Sean maybe having the same issue that I was having a minute ago with very slow internet. So we'll move forward. Ordinance administration voted three in favor, zero opposed to recommend that the city council appoint Hannah Kimberly to the Human Rights Commission term to expire 2/14/23, and I so move.
Second.
Been moving the seconded. Nope, Sean, are you there?
Yes.
All right, we got, we just.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, we just got the motion. Don't worry about it.
I could hear you, but I couldn't do that.
Yeah, we're running, internet's been kind of crazy today. So Hannah, can you tell us a little bit about yourself?
Hi, sure. I've lived in Gloucester since 2012 and I'm currently the president of the League of Women Voters, so you've mostly seen me at your debates. When the time comes, the league is there organizing those things as well as forums on ballot. Oh, I just got crazy feedback on myself, but I'm also a founding member of WE CAN, Women's Equality Cape Anne. And we do all kinds of things from helping newly arrived immigrants to Cape Anne, to holding silent visuals for Black Lives Matter, to just helping people when they, when they need it and giving informational forums as well. So that's a little bit about me. I'm also an educator. I teach in Wyndham. I wish I taught in Gloucester. But I've been, I've been doing that for a long time and that's me.
All right, do we have any council questions or council discussion at this point? We have a motion on the floor and it's been seconded, so now would be a good time if you want to have a discussion about Hannah or Counselor Gilman.
Thank you. So Hannah is a neighbor of mine. I've known her for about six or seven years. She is just totally dedicated to our community and she has an objective position on matters that are in front of us. And she is very knowledgeable and I totally support this appointment. So it's a pleasure to have Hannah in our community.
Great, thank you, Abell. Anybody else?
Thank you, Abell.
Counselor Cox and then Counselor Nolan.
I am so happy that you stepped up to be part of this committee. I don't think we could have found a better person in Gloucester to be on this. So thank you very much for volunteering.
Thank you, Melissa.
Counselor Nolan.
I have to say ditto to Counselor Cox. She stole my thunder.
Counselor Holmgren.
I agree with all that's been said. Thank you so much for stepping up, Hannah.
Anybody else? All right, I, kudos. I want to echo everybody else's sentiments tonight. I think Hannah, you're going to do a great job and it's nice to see you volunteer. You know, the volunteers that we get on all these boards and commissions and committees help the administration and help us do a better job. So it's nice that you step up because you know just about everybody in the administration and the city council. So if you need anything to help us make your job easier because you make our job easier, definitely reach out and we'll help you do anything that you need for the Human Rights Commission.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Steve.
No problem. Thank you, Hannah. So we have a motion and a second and I'm going to call for the roll call. Now, let's see, who's got roll call tonight? I think it's Counsel, I think it's myself. Counselor LeBlanc, yes. Counselor McCarthy?
Thank you, Hannah, and yes.
Counselor Nolan?
Yes, thank you, Hannah.
Counselor O'Hara?
Yes.
Counselor Peck?
Yes, thank you so much, Hannah, for stepping up and yes.
Counselor Cox?
Yes.
Counselor Gilman?
Yes.
And Counselor Holmgren?
Yes.
All right, motion to approve Hannah Kimberly on the Human Rights Commission. Passes on a roll call vote, eight in favor, one absent. All right, awesome job, everyone. Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business, please?
Steve, I had my hand up and I didn't want to be rude to interrupt and stuff. I'm finally trying to learn protocol and not to jump in. I just wanted to let everyone know that our Human Rights Committee is now full. I want to thank everyone and I told everyone, don't give up because it's different alternate terms. Hannah was our last choice, not least, but last. And I just wanted to say thank you for all of you, the support. I guess you all know Hannah, so I don't have to explain some of the things that she does. But we chose different people, different qualifications to make sure that everyone was represented in this commission. It's very hard and as you know, as some of the, we wanted to make sure that we had, you know, all people from all different kinds of views and diversity. And Hannah was a perfect last person. I've known her for a while, but not because of the things that she does, it's because of the human being she is. I mean, we all can join groups and we all, we've seen that lately. Everyone can join any kind of group and, oh, I'm on this group and I'm on this one. How is a human being though? How is your compassion going to be? How is, are you going to be diverse or are you going to be neutral? Are you going to have fair justice? And you know what? And that's what we needed and that's what Hannah is. So we all know she's a nice person, but I wanted to let you know that, yeah, she has great groups, but the fact is she's human. And you know me with my humans and she's a human being and a good soul that will be perfect. And so far, everyone who say, Mayor, when you put it through, Mayor, what's going on? Mayor, we want to stop. They're all, they're all anxious and we have such a great commission and we're going to be getting that going forward. If you want to add a liaison, Counselor, President LeBlanc, to sit in to help out, that'd be great. So this way we get politics aside, but we also get the administration, city council, we work because we're going to need some help going forward. So that's going to be great if anyone wants to volunteer.
Okay, great. Counselor Cox?
Do you know when they're going to be meeting?
Well, now that we have a complete going to, and Vanessa is going to help stop the Zoom. We're working with Holly to do that. Now we can, and she officially sworn in, now we can start that, figure it out and then look at all the terms and this way they can pick who they want as chair and what's, what's going to happen, so we can get that going, absolutely. I'm hoping within two weeks.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Sophia.
Thank you, Mayor. And we're looking for good things from you, Hannah, and your commission. All right, thank you, everyone. Madam Clerk, we have the next order of business, please.
The next order of business is the consent agenda.
All right, would there any, counselors would like to pull anything for the consent agenda? Counselor Peck?
Yes, if you could, I'd like to pull at number six just for commentary when it comes, whenever, when that comes up, please.
All righty, anybody else? All right, Counselor Peck?
Okay, number six, the request from the Community Development Director for the Preservation Committee's Off-Cycle Funding of $80,000 to the State for Park Advisory Committee. They have landscape construction. I'm very much in support of it. However, I just want to make sure that it's included back when they were having their regular meetings. I did attend and Chairman Dow assured me that he would keep me up to.
Oh, I think we may have lost Barry. I had a little power surge here at my house, so. Can everybody else hear me? Yep, okay. I think we may have lost Barry because I had a power surge at my place, so we may have lost him. All right, so Barry is not amending the consent agenda, so we don't need a vote for that. He was just giving out sort of a point of information. So we're going to, as if there's nobody else that would like to remove anything from the consent agenda, I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as is.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Call for the roll call. Counselor LeBlanc, yes. Counselor McCarthy? Nope, we may have lost John also. I don't see him. All right, so we've still got, let's see, let's see where we can get with this. Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Hara?
Yes.
Counselor Peck is no longer with us. Counselor Cox?
Yes.
Counselor Gilman?
Yes.
Counselor Holmgren?
Yes.
One, two, three, four.
Six.
Five, six. We've got six. We've got enough to accept the consent agenda. So consent agenda passes on a roll call vote of six in favor, two technical difficulties and one absent.
Steve, Counselor, I'm just real quick, if you want to review, this might be a good time to just tell the general public how, like what are, how many we need to have to hold a meeting and such, just so no one's.
Yes, so there's a, there's a council of nine. We need to have a quorum, which would be five to, to accept a regular motion. If we're going to accept a special counsel permit or if we're going to accept, accept an ordinance change, we have to have six or more. So we have, we have more than five, we have a quorum here. So this would affect, this wouldn't affect our vote to accept the consent agenda or to accept matters on the agenda that aren't a public hearing or a special counsel permit. So we will be able to move forward with the six of us. And John just messaged me, said he had a power surge and his internet is waiting to boot back up, so we're just going to move along, Counselor Cox.
Thank you. I appreciate you going over that just as a refresher because some people might be messing, freaking out, so.
And I appreciate the heads up. I have no problem. We have 20 people in attendance. We have 14 people on the panel. So I'll just give a quick briefing on that. Most of the people that are on the panel will have to speak this evening for a, at a committee level or during the council level. So that's why they're panelists. The attendees will be allowed to speak during the public hearing and during oral communications. So during the meeting, the public hearings or oral communications, I have the ability to bring people in and out to speak. So during the public hearing, I'll keep repeating myself, if you press star nine to speak if you're on a phone and you raise your hand if you're on a computer or laptop or a device. All right, so Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business, please?
Next order of business is the Budget and Finance Committee Report of October 8th.
Counselor Cox?
Good evening, everybody. I have a budget and finance consent agenda for the three items that we went over at Budget and Finance last week. If anybody has any questions regarding the three items that are on the consent agenda, please let me know now. Seeing none, I moved the consent agenda.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Like, I need a second. My committee's not here.
All right, so it's been, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any, any discussion, Counselor Cox?
No, we just, we got a donation, several donations for the Veterans Center. So if you happen to know anybody on the list, it's quite extensive list this time. So please reach out and thank them.
All right, awesome. So we have a motion and a second. Counselor Peck, welcome back.
Thank you. I totally dropped out, so I don't, I don't know where I was making comments.
We've accepted so that you weren't amending the consent agenda, so it was just an informational process. So we voted to accept the consent agenda as is. And Counselor Cox, we're in Budget and Finance and Counselor Cox just moved the consent agenda for Budget and Finance.
Okay, thank you.
All right, perfect, thank you. We're just going to wait for John to get back on, well, not wait for him, but he'll be in eventually. All right, so we have a motion and a second and I'm going to call for the roll call. Counselor LeBlanc, yes. Counselor McCarthy? Okay, still not with us. Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Hara?
Yes.
Counselor Peck?
Yes.
Counselor Cox?
Yes.
Counselor Gilman?
Yes.
Counselor Holmgren?
Yes.
All right, so a motion to accept the Budget and Finance Consent Agenda passes on a roll call vote of seven in favor, one technical difficulty and one absent.
The technical is back here.
All right, John, you're with us.
We had a brief call.
Okay, we just voted on the consent agenda. Seeing that you're on Budget and Finance, can you hear me?
It's frozen again.
Yeah.
Counselor, just real quick, the other item that we continued from Budget and Finance, the packet did not upload very well, so we continued it. It is probably going to be one of the most important things we talk about in the next three to four months in regards to spending money. This will completely deplete the Affordable Housing Trust. So I really encourage everybody to go to City Hall and look through the paper packet for this application. Plans are never going to show up well in our packets. So I have requested that a copy be at the clerk's office for you to view. So I'm going to take advantage of that opportunity tomorrow. I'm also going to sit with Craig Cattamatory on Thursday morning to go over and refresh myself on a 40B. And I hope to have plenty of information for everybody on Thursday, the 22nd, when this comes back before us. But I encourage you to go through the packet, not the one that was uploaded. It's just hard to upload those plans. But if, everybody should take a minute to stop by the clerk's office. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel McCarthy, are you with us still? Can you hear me, John?
Yep, I'm back, Steve.
All right, so seeing that you're on Budget and Finance, we had a motion to accept the Budget and Finance and I'll give you the opportunity to vote for the Budget and Finance Consent Agenda.
Yes.
Okay, so the Budget and Finance Consent Agenda passes on a roll call of eight in favor, one absent. Thank you, John. All right, great. So hopefully this doesn't, we don't have any more glitches because we need, we're going to have some public hearing and we need as many people as we can. We need at least six. Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business, please?
Yes, I would like to comment, Counselor Cox, that we do not have the plans yet. We requested the plans. We have a copy of the application that was dropped off, but I requested the engineering plans and I haven't received them yet.
Okay, all right, I'll follow up with Jamie. I was told that the plans were on their way. That was Thursday. So I would have thought that you would have had them by now, but I will take care of that. Thank you very much for letting me know.
Next order of business is the Planning and Development Committee Report of October 7th.
All righty. Counselor Gilman, would you like to defer this?
I'd love Vice Chair Counsel Holmgren to present because I wasn't at the meeting. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you. Thank you. So at the October 7th meeting, the Planning and Development Committee voted by roll call, two in favor, zero opposed, one absent to recommend that the city council approve a special events permit to the Gloucester Police Community Impact Unit to hold the Halloween walkthrough on Thursday, October 29th, 2020, between the hours of 2:00 PM and 4:00 PM, with closures of Main Street from the corner of Pleasant Street and Main Street Bank Gloucester to 2 Main Street Tonneau Restaurant with the following conditions. One, no merchant setups on the sidewalk blocking entrance ways to retail or residential units, hydrants, crosswalks or handicap ramps. Two, the organizers shall allow the fire department drive-through access with the fire engine at the convenience of the fire department. Three, that all of the side streets, Short, Porter, Center and Hancock Streets shall not be blocked so that emergency vehicles may enter and exit Main Street as needed. Four, merchants shall be responsible for their own trash removal. Five, plumbing codes and regulations shall be adhered to regarding the use of restaurant bathroom facilities. Six, special lighting and electrical requirements necessitate approval of the inspector of buildings and the electrical inspector. Seven, the closure of the street at the intersection of Main and Short, Porter, Center and Hancock Streets must be by means of soft horses or the like as directed by the Gloucester Police Department. Eight, it is the responsibility of the Gloucester Police Community Impact Unit to procure any other necessary local approvals associated with this event. Nine, that the unit makes reasonable notification to all residents and merchants along the route that will be affected by the closure. Ten, all other applicable laws, city ordinances and/or regulations that are in full force, including ordinances regarding blocking of sidewalks, the police department will enforce these requirements in the interest of public safety. Eleven, the Gloucester Police Community Impact Unit shall also adhere to any requirements expressed by the Special Event Advisory Committee, including that A, that a letter from the office of the mayor be provided assuring that the event is covered under the City of Gloucester liability insurance, and B, that this approval is based on the Gloucester Police Community Impact Unit plan submitted to the city clerk's office. C, must follow the guidelines of the CDC and the local board of health for social distancing. Masks are required for people walking on Main Street. And 12, signs will be posted at all parking meters downtown to notify of the event 24 hours in advance from 12 o'clock noon on October 28th through 12 o'clock noon on October 29th, and I so move.
Second.
Thank you. So we had a nice, about 30-minute meeting regarding this event walkthrough and Lieutenant Jeremiah Nacastro from the Gloucester Police Community Impact Unit has been kind enough to put this together with the mayor and the Chamber of Commerce. They, they gave us a very good presentation and it seems that they're really going to be following social distancing requirements. I would, if it's appropriate to do with this time, like to put one, an amendment on this motion, just to say that the event may be canceled up to 48 hours in advance of and/or on the day of the event. And I, I just want to do that because of the unfortunate uptick of COVID cases and I, I really, I really hope we don't have to cancel it. I mean.
Counselor?
Yes.
Could I just mention that at our meeting, if you remember?
Barry, hold on one second. So Counselor, Counselor Holmgren, is that, is that a motion?
It was, yes.
Second.
I'd like to second that.
All right, so, motion, motion's been made and seconded. Go ahead, Barry. So we'll have a discussion on the amendment.
No, this is why I was going to bring it up, that it was discussed at our meeting and talked about the cancellation of the time right up to that day. And both Lieutenant Nacastro and the mayor indicated that they would be looking the previous, at the end of the previous week to give people plenty of time. And I appreciate adding this amendment in and because of the uptick and I will, I will support the amendment, but they did already discuss doing that at our meeting and absolutely said that they would, if they thought it was going to be necessary to cancel, that they would even do so for more than 48 hours. They would do it at the end of the previous week.
I agree. I appreciate that, Counselor Peck. Thank you. And yes, I do, I do remember that. I just wanted to add it to the conditions.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Barry. Counselor Gilman on the amendment?
Thank you. I'd like to support the amendment. It's typical to what the Special Events Committee has been supporting all along since COVID, back to the Fiesta. And I think it's just good information to have right in the conditions for this, for this approval, so I will support the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else that on the amendment? All right, seeing none. I'm going to support the amendment also. I have some concerns about, same as Counselor Holmgren. I think our administration, I think our Gloucester Police Department and our Health Department will have a grasp on this, so if there is some concerns that it will be noted and canceled and, you know, we shouldn't have to worry about our community and our kids knowing that we have our police department, our health department and our administration on top of this, so I'm going to support the amendment. All right, if there's nobody else, I'm going to call for the roll call for the amendment. Counselor LeBlanc, yes. Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Hara?
Yes.
Counselor Peck?
Yes.
Counselor Cox?
Yes.
Counselor Gilman?
Yes.
Counselor Holmgren?
Yes.
All right, motion to amend passes on a roll call vote, eight in favor, one absent. Okay, so back to the main motion. Lieutenant, would you like to say anything before we get, we're going to have a council discussion, but you're on the call here and if you'd like to say anything.
I think Janet described exactly what we're doing. We're going to have three places you can park, St. Peter's Park, I-4C2 in the other loop to maintain, so there's no grouping to maintain social distancing. We'll have a police.
Uh, we'll have a police uh, school resource officer up by Bank Gloucester, another one down by Tonoe, I'll be in the middle. Um, and you know, let's just cross our fingers that the numbers start going down. But I think she wrapped everything up in, in her presentation.
Thank you, Jeremiah, Counselor Cox?
Um, I just have a question on item number twelve that says signs will be posted all parking meters downtown to notify of the event twenty-four hours in advance from twelve noon on the day before the event through noon, the day of the event. But the um, the event doesn't happen until two P M., so like, wouldn't you just continue it through the event time? Are you pulling the signs off at noon?
So. That was just the notification.
At, at two o'clock.
Thank you, Barry.
At two o'clock, the road's gonna be closed, so nobody's gonna be able to get in there. But the, the signs are gonna be up till four o'clock.
Okay, it just says twelve noon and which is pre-two P M. when the roads are gonna be closed.
We're, we're closing roads at noon time.
Okay.
You're gonna close the road two hours prior to the event?
Yes.
Main Street's going to love you guys.
Okay, all right, thank you, Counsel Cox. Uh, any other council discussion? Um, so we have a hand up in the attendees. We typically don't do this, but with the uh, council's approval, um, if it's on this topic, I think maybe we, we should hear from. Who, um, allow him to talk, Bart, can you hear me? Hmm. Hello, Bart? All right. Okay, tried. All right, so we tried, I'm not sure what he's there for, but he does have his counsel given.
Yes, can I, can we just hear from um, Lieutenant Nacastro to, um, I'd just like to inquire the reasons for closing down Main Street at noon if the event doesn't happen at two? And if that has been reviewed with the um, shop owners and the restaurants? Just, I'm sure you've discussed this, I wasn't at the meeting and I'm sorry about that.
Jeremiah?
So uh, the store owners do know um, that we are planning something. We haven't handed out any flyers or anything yet because we didn't know if it was gonna get approval. So two hours gives us enough time to safely close the road, allow people to leave Main Street before kids start walking on Main Street. If we close the road at two o'clock, i- it's not safe for kids to be walking down Main Street while everybody's trying to get out. I just feel that two hours is enough time to uh, clear the road in a safe manner before the kids start arriving. I say two o'clock, but you know they're gonna start arriving at one thirty.
Right, thank you, Jeremiah, and I'm sure you use your better judgment. If somebody's kicking around till twelve thirty doing their shopping, you know, gonna force them out of there, just.
Then I add um, some, we did go to some of the shops. Um, they actually uh, chose the day. Um, they said, please don't do it on a Friday or Saturday, it's kind of difficult. Um, two to four is fine because they used to have that with the little children's, the toddlers, um, little parade that, that we should start at Haveloo and walk all around. And um, we are going to have um, tables outside, so no one's gonna go in the store, so they know that. And um, we, for people who are already there, we're not gonna, if people walking down Main Street, we're not gonna turn them away. They're allowed to go shopping and do what they need to do.
Right.
It's the vehicles. Um, they'll see the kids, they'll understand it's toddlers to elementary, you know, fifth grade. And the candy will be on the table or gifts, and we have sponsors, um, you know, Gloucester Education Foundation, Addison Gilbert Hospital, K P N Savings Banks, you know, Jeremiah's um, donations that he receives are doing bags. So these bags can be used all year long to make sure that most of the stuff are already in a bag, so they can just pick up the bag. We're gonna have three different spots so people all don't congregate in one spot, and then it'll be no social distancing. So we'll have one in the beginning, in the middle, so they can go pick up a bag and do what they need to do and go. The merchants will know that at quarter or four, you know, I'll be down there, we'll be going down saying, you know, start closing up so they can start taking things. Everyone knows that at four o'clock shop, everyone needs to, they can continue shopping. If they choose to shop, that's something different. We don't throw or, or evict anyone to do things, but we're going to start opening the roads, the parents need to know. The reason why we wandered the streets closed is because it give more room for social distancing. Um, it'll have people be able to walk on the sidewalk, walk on the other sidewalk, up and down, and then people who need the, uh, in the middle who wants to be more social distance, if you need carriages, strollers. Uh, this way, it's more space for everyone, and if they wanted to make it like a little family event, because you have a family of four or five, at least you can have your little social distance itself. Um, and so hopefully, maybe some of you would like to volunteer and come down with a costume, just Val Gilman, be careful which costume you wear. We've done those before, so um, thank you. Um, it, we, as you know, that we, you all participated, thank you very much, in the Halloween bash. We used to have a city hall, that's not allowable. As you know, that the uptick, we're watching, we're, you know, it's, uh, we're looking at everything. The Board of Health has uh, right now, so far, we have this support. Uh, today Karen Carroll was on with the Board of Health with Desi to find out what we need to do, who's doing Halloween? Are they canceling it? Who's doing that? As you know, the night of Halloween, a normal Halloween night, Gloucester never puts on any time or saying you can, you cannot. This is um, up to the parents. Um, if we start going up, and I'm hoping not, but if we start going up by the end of, of the month, um, you know what, maybe the counselors or whatever, the ward counselors would be able to go around and figure out if someone wants to put maybe a time for people to visit. So this way, we know at a certain time, everyone is safe at home. I don't know, um, it's, uh, it's gonna be up to the ward counselors, they can send suggestions or at large, they're out there too. Um, and find suggestions what parents want to do. I'm not canceling, as of right now, we're not canceling any um, Halloween evening on October thirty-first. It's a Saturday, we understand. Um, I just want everyone to know that, you know, we're taking precautions. We have precautions out there, we keep telling people. As you know, the uptick is, uh, was a gathering, so I mean, it's not, it's scary. Um, it's, it's very scary, it's very emotional. Uh, my staff has been working with some of you around the clock. Uh, we want to make sure that it stays that, that one cluster so we can get everything going. And so um, when people ask, you know, i- it's hot, it jumped, uh, uh, it's gonna jump even higher. We have two, as you know, two um, testing sites to come, thank you to the governor, we're not supposed to get them unless you're in the red. But um, I guess I scare a lot of people, so we got it earlier. So um, we're gonna get it this weekend, this week, and if we need it more, but it's gonna jump because it's open to the public, you, anywhere can go. So people, even if they are not associated with the cluster, are gonna go. People wanna know, so expect a very high jump, uh, uh, and hopefully not, but just expect it because that's normal. And we'll work together to make sure that um, Halloween goes by, and then when Thanksgiving comes, it goes right down. We can be thankful that um, for some of us, it'll be a new year on November third. And um, and it'll be over and we'll have a nice Thanksgiving, so um, you know what, be safe, everyone. It, it is scary, is, you know, we've been very lucky, we had seventy thousand people on our beaches, we were going crazy, the, you know, making all of these things. The uh, one day we have uh, you know, uh, the Rangers, hi-ho, one day we have this, that, but we made it, we did it, we did it together. Don't give up hope. And please, don't blame any nationality or any groups, it doesn't matter, doesn't matter. It's here, we're a good community, we work together, we'll get over this, and we make sure that we have no more hospital cases or any more deaths. That's, that's my concern, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Counselor Gilman?
I just wanted to commend um, Lieutenant Nacastro and the Community Impact Group of the Police Department because I think they've done a phenomenal job, um, and also working with the mayor's office to um, really plan this event. Um, I listened, even though I missed the meeting, I listened to the video. I listened to the video of the Special Events Committee, there's been a lot of thought behind it. And um, I, I think it's, it's really designed to be a safe, well-controlled event. So I have my fingers crossed, but I will be supporting um, this motion, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel, Counsel Holgrum.
I agree with Counselor Gilman, I will also be supporting this. Um, I uh, really appreciate the uh, the drive of uh, Lieutenant Nacastro and the Community Impact Unit and the mayor's office to give the children of this community something to look forward to. It's been a very tough year for everybody, uh, especially the kids who've been so resilient in so many ways. Um, so I, I really, uh, I appreciate you all paying very careful attention to how we proceed with social distancing. Hopefully, in the next couple of weeks, it'll still be safe to do an event like this. Um, I, uh, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Holgrum, any other council discussion? Counsel Nolan?
I, I appreciate the Gloucester Police Community Impact Unit in all they do, not just for the children and the younger people of the city, but for everybody in the city, and wish we're lucky to have them. And I do support this, I think it's gonna be a wonderful event, if allowed. Um, and if it's not gonna be safe, I know that they'll, they'll draw the line.
Thank you, Sean, Counsel O'Hara?
Yes, I just want to mimic what everyone's been saying, that um, trying to maintain some normalcy, particularly for the children, is extremely important. I will be supporting this, thank you.
All right, any, any other council discussion? Counsel McCarthy?
Yeah, just basically what everybody else said, Steve. Uh, obviously, uh, I support the uh, Police Department. And uh, I think we have to just keep swinging away and keep trying to do these events, and if it gets canceled, at least we tried.
All right, um, seeing nobody else.
Counsel President, I'm gonna have to jump off, so if anyone has any questions, ask them now, I'm leaving, um, but Jeremiah's here. I wanted to let you know with all your support, because people don't realize what we do behind the scenes. They think, you know, because it's Zoom, it's easy, they don't realize some of us had full-time jobs, some of us are going crazy. You gotta listen to me complain, i- it's, it's, we're working together. But I want to tell you something, you know, during the summer, when some people were relaxing, we had um, a couple of families, we had some children that couldn't relax. They couldn't do some of the stuff they were doing, having difficulties. And you know, uh, I want to thank John McCarthy in the beginning, you know, the kids and, you know, the cops and kids and all that program was great, we went forward. And um, we called upon them, and as you know, it went um, great success with some kids being able to do whatever gaming is, I have no idea, I'll have to learn. Um, and all these great programs. You know, when people say, you know, you have to do this, you gotta defund the police. Well, next time when someone asks you, you just say, look, we don't defund, we educate. So all of the work that, all of the counselors and all the budget that, and Counsel Cox, thank you, that you point forward to, we need things, it's to educate. They've been on mental health crisis Zooms with me, they've been educated on Alzheimer's, they've been educated on everything you can think of, education. Education, money spent on education to make sure we've got all the trainings on the right departments, and you put people where they're supposed to go. John started the program, uh, this chief of police is doing great, he sees what his police officers and police, uh, you know, they can do. He puts them in different programs so we can excel. It's not the same thing, and we're very fortunate, it's not like the same thing that they have in other communities that are larger or, or, you know, uh, like, let's say Salem. We are fortunate that we're able to educate, react, be proactive, and work together and make sure that we have everything. As you can see with, we started off with the drug addictions, we started off with Alzheimer's because that's scary. We started off with children, mental health issues, so we educate, and I want to thank you for that. I have to go to the trail places, see everyone later, have a good night.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so I'm, I'm gonna support this, this evening also. Um, part of me doesn't want to, uh, but I do trust our administration, our Health Department and our Police Department, that they will make a educated decision whether to continue this. But our, it starts at home, it starts with us, it starts with you, take care of yourself, take your precautions, and that's the way we're gonna stop the spread of this. So if everybody follows the guidelines and does what they're supposed to do, we could have, we could have this event and we can have future events. So it starts at home and it starts with you. So um, uh, Lieutenant Nacastro, would you like to say anything before we vote?
Real quickly, I just want to add, as much as I'd love to say that this was the cops and kids idea, several storefronts on Main Street called cops and kids to see if we would undertake this event. So it wasn't our idea, it was uh, stores on Main Street that reached out to us because they knew that we would take something like this on. As far as the street being closed two hours before, I am gonna be down there. We're not looking to tow cars, we're not looking to hurt businesses, people will be able to shop. If somebody's stuck in there, their car's gonna remain there till four o'clock, uh, unless I can safely get them out. We're gonna use common sense, no one's gonna get upset, hopefully, thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Um, so maybe I will show up, I think a couple of years ago, I had the all-time greatest Halloween costume at the mayor's. Um, I showed up as Carol, uh, Mayor Kirk, so maybe I'll pull something out this year and surprise everybody, so. All right, that being said, I'm gonna call for the roll call vote, everybody, if there's no more than other discussion. Uh, Counsel LeBlanc, yes? Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counselor Pet?
Yes.
Counselor Cox?
Yes.
Counselor Gilman?
Yes.
And Counselor Holgrum?
Yes.
Motion passes on a roll call vote of eight in favor, one absent. Jeremiah, thank you for being here tonight, we're looking forward to things. Um, hopefully, we can get, get through this and have a very safe and fun event for our children.
Thank you very much.
All right, and if you need anything, reach out to us and at, at least keep the council updated on this, so we can uh, pump it out to our constituents if anything changes also.
All right, great, I will, thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
Next order of business is the first scheduled public hearing, public hearing twenty twenty dash eleven, special city council permit twenty twenty dash zero zero three. Atlantic Road number one sixty-three, formerly part of one seventy-one, map seventy-three, lot forty-one. A portion of fought, former map seventy-three, lot twenty-six. Gloucester zoning ordinance sections three point two point two footnote E, dimensional requirements for multifamily dwellings and their accessory uses other than signs, reduction in distance between buildings, two point three point one eight. Conversion to or new multifamily or apartment dwelling, seven or more dwelling units. Section five point seven point five, special permit criteria for major project and section one point one, zero point one, parentheses A, parentheses one, parentheses two, jurisdiction of the City Council in the R twenty low medium density residential district.
All right, so I'm going to open the public hearing and ask if there's anybody that would, so before I start the public hearing, um, I'm just gonna give all, some, some rules that we need to follow. So the um, the applicant will have fifteen minutes to, in favor, to speak. And opposition will have up to fifteen minutes also. If the applicant goes over a few minutes, I'll have to give those few minutes back to the opposition if they need them. Um, and then after that, we're gonna have three minutes each from, for the public hearing part to listen to the in-favor or opposed from the attendees. So just a couple of guidelines before we start this. Um, so open the public hearing and ask if there's anybody that would like to speak in favor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Deborah Ellison, Ellison Law Office, sixty-three Middle Street, Gloucester. I represent the applicant, one seventy-one Atlantic Road LLC. Brian Malanson is the manager, and he is participating in this um, Zoom meeting. The engineer is more on, uh, more in Cameron group, and John Moran is participating. And the architect is Andrew Sidford Architects, and he is also participating. And if I might share my screen, um, we can go through the presentation.
Okay, Joanne, can we get her to share her screen?
It, it's already on, all panelists can share their screen.
Okay.
Can you see it?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, so tonight, we'd like to um, go through the general background of the project, give an engineering presentation and architectural presentation, and then go through the legal criteria and have questions and answers from the board. The following special permits are generally allowed under one point eight point three. And specifically, we are looking for under two point three point one subsection eight, a new multifamily with seven or more dwelling units. And under five point five point seven, a major project permit with eleven dwelling units. The buildings have been modified um, so that they no longer require a height special permit. There, they have been lowered to thirty feet, and that was at the request of the neighbors. The um, also, the five-unit building has been slightly rotated to preserve and augment a distant view of one of the neighbors on Link's Road. And because of those changes, we are no longer seeking a special permit for height and also no longer seeking a special permit for the distance between buildings. So the only requests are for a new multifamily and major project. Mr. Malanson purchased the property in two thousand and eighteen from the Ocean View Inn Property, which is formerly called the Ocean View Inn Property. which is formerly called the Ocean View Inn Property. This slide shows the old configuration. You can see that there were several very odd-shaped lots. We had buildings that ran across lot lines, which is unusual. And the hotel accessed this site by several roads off of, or driveways off of Atlantic Road. The buildings were and are in disrepair and are continuing to deteriorate. The current site plan has been modified. So Lot 5 is what is in front of you tonight. These four lots are A&R lots that are separate from the project that is in front of you. Mr. Malanson has completed the rehab of the mansion that is on the corner of Atlantic and Hypopols. He's begun the construction of the first duplex on Atlantic Road, and this will be the third duplex. This is a rendering of the new site. There will be six units in this building that faces Atlantic Road, and there will be five units in the one that is diagonal to Atlantic Road. According to the assessor's records, there were, when this was a hotel, there were 28 hotel units in the single-story buildings that are on the site. And then there were an additional seven units in the two-story building that was on the site. And on the entire property, there were actually 68 units. So for many years, the hotel was very active. It held many weddings and other functions throughout the year. And prior development proposals by previous owners contemplated up to 18 multifamily units and in three buildings that really peppered the entire site. So the current proposal is much more modest. It's in keeping with the surrounding neighborhood, and it will replace the currently abandoned structures on the site and will add to the housing stock for the city. It will also comply with the city's inclusionary zoning requirement. The applicant is not seeking any dimensional relief. It complies with all dimensional zoning requirements, and Mr. Malanson is not asking for any variances, only the two special permits that we spoke about that are allowed under the ordinance. The proposed use is not prohibited. It's an allowed use. It just requires your permission. It's a very common practice, as you know, to seek out and receive special permits under the GZO. The site has sat fallow for many years, and its redevelopment will make the site once again safe, useful, and aesthetically appealing. As I said, the application only affects Lot 5, which is the largest lot. Mr. Malanson intends to demolish the existing hotel and outbuildings on the site and to convert it to multifamily housing containing 11 units total, divided between two buildings. And now I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Moran to go through and explain the engineering aspects of this project.
Good evening, members of the council. For the record, John Moran from the Moran Cameron Group, offices at 66 Elm Street in Danvers, with civil engineers on the project. So if you want to go to the second sheet, Deb. So pretty much, this is the existing conditions plan of Lot 5. What you see in purple is the perimeter of Lot 5. It is an A&R lot. It does have frontage on Atlantic Road and the required lot area. And pretty much what you see there dashed in red and black is existing driveways and the existing buildings that are on the Lot 5 property. You can move next slide, Deb. Keep going. Keep going. We'll go to the color one, I think. Next one. So what you see there, that's the site plan with the grading and the drainage. So what we're able to do on the site, the first thing Malanson Development asked us to do is, you know, what's allowed by zoning for a number of units? What can we do on this piece of property? So what you're allowed is, under multifamily, it's based on lot area, on what you're allowed, how many units on a property, based on zoning. And wetlands are one of the items that aren't allowed. You can't use the entire wetland on a multifamily development. You're allowed to use up to 10% of the wetland area. So on this property, based on the changes, I'll back up just one step. One of the things that we're able to do on the project was not only propose a viable project that met the intent of our client, but we're able to actually alleviate some drainage issues out in the neighborhood based on the drainage on this property. So if you actually back up a couple slides, Deb. One more. One more. That's it. So there's, you see that speckled area out in the back behind the building? It abuts the golf course property. You'll actually see in green is the limits of the wetland. And there's a culvert that goes under the gravel driveway that goes from the paved surface out to that little gravel area out in the back. And that's a restriction that could potentially cause flooding up on abutting properties because of the amount of water coming through there. What we're able to do, if you move forward three more slides, Deb. One more. So that blue area that you see there, we were actually able to open up that area, remove all the fill that's up in that area, connect those wetlands with a large, almost a swale, instead of a culvert, eliminating the restriction that that culvert was causing during larger storm events. That's something we didn't need to do as part of the project. We could have easily designed around it and left everything alone. But Mr. Malanson thought, you know, I have the opportunity to do this. We hired DeRosa Environmental to assist in the wetland mitigation required to do this. And it made the permitting with the Conservation Commission a little more complicated than what we really would have needed. But it just seemed, from an engineering standpoint, it made a lot of sense, and that's what was proposed. The project did approve, received approval from the Conservation Commission, and Order of Conditions was issued. So the project does meet the required parking for zoning. Under the zoning bylaw, we'd need 17 spaces. 21 spaces are provided. There's a combination of interior spaces for garages and exterior spaces. The six-unit building that's pretty much parallel to Atlantic Road, that has parking in the front, and then the two end units actually have a garage. And the architect will get into that a little bit on why that design was in that format. The five-unit building, all the units have garages. And then the additional parking, there's an overflow parking area for, to meet the zoning criteria and for an additional five spaces for guests. So the project does comply to zoning. The actual project or the existing site had no drainage mitigation whatsoever. So you had a lot of impervious surface, a lot of roof area that just directly discharged to a wetland with no treatment. As you've probably seen in the past, you know, there's been a lot of changes in the last 20 years with regards to stormwater management. This project actually results in a net decrease of 9,400 square feet of impervious surface on this property. And because of the fact that we had a reduction in impervious surface, the amount of stormwater mitigation required could have been minimized. But, you know, the client actually said, you know what? During our discussions with the city, we actually designed the project to comply 100% with the stormwater standards that currently exist today. So not only were we able to reduce the amount of impervious surface on the property by 9,400 square feet, but we were able to design a stormwater mitigation system that meets the criteria of today's standards, even though it wasn't required. All utilities are being upgraded, and the traffic patterns should actually be a little less than, as Attorney Ellison pointed out, at its heyday, you know, it was a very busy property, and the amount of traffic coming out of this property should be reduced quite a bit. We are providing an emergency access over to Eagle Road. There'll be a gate right at the property line that'll strictly be emergency only. And that's about it. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, John. We're going to have councilor questions later on at the public hearing part. Deb, anything else?
Yes, I'd like to have the architect, Andrew Sidford, go through the architectural slides for you.
Okay. Andrew, go ahead. You've got to unmute yourself, Andrew. You think we know that by now, right?
I think so. If only my children could use that button. Anyway, my name's Andrew Sidford. I'm an architect in Newburyport, and we have offices in Newburyport and Boston. And this slide is showing the original historic mansion that we renovated and restored. And it really is a good place to start because it's the inspiration for the design of the remainder of the buildings. It's a classic seaside architecture, traditional vocabulary. You see large gable roof and rather massive, rather tall, and much of the top floor is buried in that roof to help keep the mass down. And you see the historical details and muttons and millions. And so we're going to move on to the next slide, Deb. This is the new single family, and this is the new duplex next to it. And then on to the next slide, we'll go on to the multifamily behind. The intent here from the beginning was to try and make this as copacetic and aesthetically pleasing and small in volume as possible for a multifamily. So what you can see here is that we, this is the six-unit building facing the road, and every intent is to try and break down that mass and make it, have it be similar vocabulary as the historic mansions up and down the Atlantic coast. So here, you'll see the top floor is buried, is also has as large a roof as possible. We originally had a taller, deeper building because we wanted a taller roof, not because it would create more space. We just thought it aesthetically looked better. And your zoning incentivizes a flat roof, but from the beginning, the intent was to try and make this look as historically accurate as possible and pleasing. So what you see on the six-unit building, you'll see here, the top floor isn't very usable space-wise, but we still wanted to create as much roof form there as possible to anchor it. And so in the various plans, we reduce the depth of the building in order to allow us to still have a roof to be seen up there, and this is the current version. You also see that these gables span multiple units. And so the intent is for this to feel as much like a large mansion that was renovated more than a six-unit building. The other thing we did is on this building, there are no garage doors facing the road. So again, because there's just a clear way to communicate that that's a multifamily. So we have parking at the, the end units on the right and the left. But you, they're in the back corners, so you don't, you don't see them. You also see we used bay windows, gables, porches, balconies to try and break down that mass. And then on the five-unit building, we're here, you can see that we have garage doors on this, this building, because you can't see these doors from the, from the street. And what Deb just switched is actually the previous higher version, and this is the revised version to keep it at 30 feet. So this is what we had originally, and this is what it is now, so it's a lower version. And I think, yeah, the lower version has to do entirely with what the neighbors were requesting, and we've been trying very hard to work with their request and with the owner's intent to make it look as good as possible. And that's pretty much what I have to say. Oh, here are the elevations, but the models in many ways speak more about it. Are easier for people to see, but these are the elevations if people have specific questions. And Deb, are there any other slides? Yeah, these, and then this is the five-unit. Oh, this one's helpful because this shows the height reduction that was done during the design. The red was when we were going for a special allowance to make that higher, and now you see how much we've reduced that, that height. Our intent by reducing is we made that up by having a lower floor-to-floor height and less space in the attic, which means it's not terribly usable, but we think it's aesthetically important for those masses. So this just shows both sets of buildings with that height change.
Thank you, Andrew. Deb, we're about at 15 minutes. Just to tick over, is there anything else you'd like to? You can have all the time you'd like.
I think it is necessary to go through the legal criteria. And so I would like an opportunity to do that.
Yep.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. So on this slide number 37, we show the special permit criteria under 1.8.3. And social, economic, and community needs are served by this project for many reasons. The proposal is modest, and it's in keeping with the surrounding neighborhood. There are only 11 units. Prior proposals have had many more. We will replace the abandoned buildings and make the site safe and useful and aesthetically appealing. And it's a residential development, which is more conforming with the GZO and more consistent with other uses in the district and the neighborhood than the prior hotel and function facility was. It also meets all of the density and dimensional requirements of the ordinance. This is a copy of the zoning chart that is on the plans. And as John had said, only 10% of the wetlands could be used, so 90% of the wetlands were excluded from a calculation of lot area. And even doing that, the lot area is 167,000 square feet, which is four times the 40,000 square feet that's required for lot area. The city has a lot of controls over density under the ordinance. And in addition to lot area, you look at open space per unit, lot area per unit, and lot coverage. And this project exceeds all of those standards. Lot area per unit, the proposed is 15,000 approximately, required is 10,000. So for each unit, there's 5,000 square feet more of lot area than is required. That's twice the size of most people's houses. Open space is similar. There's approximately 12,000 square feet. Required is 7,500 square feet. That's 4,300 square feet more per unit, again. Lastly, lot coverage for the project is 8.4%, and the allowed is 25%. Again, it's a mere fraction of what was allowed as of right. And under the ordinance, there could be 16 units on this site, and Mr. Malanson is only proposing 11. It also complies with all the frontage, front, side, and rear yard setbacks. It's also adding to the city's housing stock, and it will follow the inclusionary zoning. Under the Housing Production Plan for the city, it suggests that the community needs more multifamily housing and more diverse housing. We have 57% of the Gloucester homes are single-family. 31% are two-family and four-family, and only 3% are 10 to 19 units. And according to the production plan, a diverse housing stock is advantageous because it gives a variety of products and available at numerous price points. Lastly, the project will, as I said, include inclusionary housing ordinance, comply with the inclusionary housing ordinance. Traffic flow and safety will be improved, as John mentioned. There's only one way in and one way out, and there's a circular drive, so no one will be backing out onto the public way. They'll be able to turn and come out. There are 17 spaces required. 21 will be available. The driveway is 20 feet wide, and it has a turnaround that's adequate to accommodate City of Gloucester Fire Department. A swept analysis was done, and it confirms that it's adequate access. And then there will be a 16-foot gated access, which will be emergency access only. Utilities and public services will be updated and adequate to serve the residential development, and we anticipate that the consumption for utilities will be much less than the former use. The project is consistent with the neighborhood and the social character. The neighborhood is mixed residential and commercial oceanfront, larger remodeled homes, several large motels and hotels, and the project's designed to be consistent with those. And so just briefly, this is Atlantic Road. These are the houses that are along Atlantic Road. And when you drive down Atlantic Road, sometimes the buildings capture your attention much more than the ocean does, surprisingly. And this is what Brian Malanson was trying to mimic with his project. And this is what Brian Melanson was trying to mimic with his project. So as I could scroll through, you can see that the proposed project fits with the Atlantic Road neighborhood. Brian was also very concerned with preserving existing views. So he moved the building, the five unit building, to preserve a view, a distant view of a neighbor on Lynx Road. He was also concerned about the view from seventy-eight High Poples, which had a view, has a view out to Thatter Island. And so this shows you a little bit more how that view has been preserved. He also improved some other views. The two houses, one on High Poples, uh, one on Eagle Road and one on High Poples, now look at a two-story abandoned building. They are now going to have improved views out, uh, out onto the, um, development and perhaps beyond. Also, this single story building, which now looks at the single story motel buildings, will be clear. It will not have any buildings in front of it. So those views have been improved. The quality of the natural environment will be improved, as Mr. Moran mentioned, by improving the existing wetlands and improving the function of the drainage in that area. We're also, um, water will be allowed to from, flow more freely into the wetlands. Also, by exceeding the lot area and dwelling unit and the open space per dwelling unit requirements, the natural environment is preserved. It provides sufficient outdoor space to promote the quiet enjoyment of its residence. Potential fiscal impact is, excuse me, positive. The improvement in occupation of this long vacant site will increase its value and add residential tax income to the city, create a greater consumer base for the local businesses and services and likely improve neighborhood property values. So I would suggest to you that the criteria of one point eight point three are met. And that based upon that criteria, the proposed use will be in harmony with the general purpose of the ordinance. And it will not adversely affect the neighborhood, the zoning district or the city to such an extent as to outweigh the beneficial effects. With regard to the major project, the, um, project does have access to a collector's street, which is required, which is Atlantic Road. It, um, has, Atlantic Road has a mix of residential and commercial homes and single families. The access, as I said, will be more than adequate. And it's much more limited use than the prior use. And the motel, function facility and conference center had much more traffic coming in and out than this will. Also connects to municipal sewer. The site plan shows the access points as is required, drainage and utility serving the buildings. And there'll be no access to the project from minor streets serving single family residences. The parking areas are screened what, as required when practical. The lighting of the parking area is designed to avoid glare onto adjoining properties and will comply with the ordinance. The turnaround in the access, um, requires, provides that no egress will be made by backing out onto Atlantic Road. And there's no topographical changes being made. And a cohesive landscape plan has been provided as part of the application, which will incorporate trees, shrubbery, grass and other landscaping throughout the development. Therefore, I would suggest to you that all of the requirements of the zoning ordinance have been met with regard to the multifamily, um, major project five point seven point five. And based on this information, we'd ask that you grant the two permits. And we're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Deb. So we're going to move right along to, we're going to get to counselor questions in a bit. We're going to keep, um, if you can, exactly, thank you. We're gonna, uh, ask if there's anybody else that would like to speak in favor of this project? All right, we've got a couple of people in attendance here. Let me get up to them. Bart, can you hear me? Hello, Bart? All right, we have a technical.
He's muted.
Oh, there you go. Bart, can you hear me? Bart Trosch. We're gonna be, we're gonna be patient. Hello, Bart? Can you hear me? Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave him muted for a second here. We're gonna move along to Jim Town. Jim, can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Name and address for the record.
Good evening. That's Jim Town, twelve Lynx Road in Gloucester.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you for the opportunity to be able to briefly speak. I just wanted to, um, you know, share my support, um, of this project. Quite honestly, I think if Gloucester had more developers like Mr. Melanson and his, uh, his team, we'd be a, 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 a much better community for it. This property is, was previously mentioned, um, has been through, uh, you know, a number of things over the last few years and mostly been derelict. And there's certainly been some challenges, uh, prior to the potential density and other uses of the, of the land. Mr. Melanson came in with a totally different approach and was looking to, um, you know, obviously, you know, satisfy any need for a developer to make money, but also to make sure that he was doing it in character with the neighborhood and in partnership with the neighbors. And I think he's done an excellent job of that. And, um, the, the city seems to often have limited resources in terms of planning and development and working with, uh, the neighbors. Certainly have experienced other, uh, properties around in this area where things have fallen short. And Mr. Melanson has gone out of his way to meet with us on a number of occasions, present information and try to work with everyone as much as possible. I think the water mitigation they're doing is, is severely overdue. Um, I had talked with Greg over in the planning department and the water issues have been a problem for years. And also noted on a recent other development, uh, project in the area by the conservation committee. And I think those type of, of activities, um, you know, really set this project apart. So, um, I'm pleased to support it as well as my wife and, um, and hope you will as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jim. We appreciate it. Alrighty, let's see, moving right along. Pam, can you hear me? Hello, Pam?
Mark and Pam Poole, can you hear?
Yes, and I, name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Mark Poole and I live on eighty-four High Poples Row with my wife Pam and two children.
Got it.
Our decision to support this project is based on what we feel is like the least impactful likely outcome of developing the site. It's not an ideal scenario in all areas, but it does leave a good amount of open space while preserving and creating ocean views for direct abutters and beyond. It leaves out the use of Eagle and High Poples roads other than for emergency access, which I think was a big deal for a lot of us in, in this area. We feel the Melanson Development Group is committed to quality work, work practices and is open to being open with the butters on their intentions. We do have concerns that the background lighting will be kept to a minimum and the overall feel of a multifamily complex be kept as subtle as possible and not become a grand spectacle of the back shore. Right? That spectacle is actually across the street where there's no development preserved forever. Right? We are aware that our twenty zoning allows for duplexes, perhaps of which up to five could be built on this property. For us, it brings in the question, you know, just what is density? Is it about, you know, how many duplexes you can cram in with garages, outbuildings and swimming pools? Or is density about, you know, how many units should be in one large structure? Right? It's, it's, there's a balance, I suppose. It's up, you know, it's up for the, to you to decide. But that's, um, and we're happy with, uh, with what we see in front of us, I guess, at the moment. Thank you.
All right, Mark. Thank you. Appreciate that. All right, moving right along. We're gonna go to Bill. Bill, can you hear me?
Hi.
Hi. Name and address for the record, please.
Uh, William Meneese, Eight Lynx Road.
Go ahead.
I fully support, uh, this development. Uh, Brian's been nothing but helpful to meet with us. And, uh, I lived here, you know, when the hotel was here and this new project coming in. I'm very happy with just seeing these people living on the back shore in this new, new house and just the way everything looks. And, uh, I just fully support everything. I just want to say thank you and that's all I have to say.
All right, Cap. Thank you. We appreciate it. All right, I'm gonna reach back around for Bart. I've asked him to unmute. Bart Trosch? Can you hear me, Bart? Still not getting nothing from him. He was unmuted for a little bit and I heard a little background noise, but, we'll circle back to him at the end of the public hearing. Uh, is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor? If you'd like to speak in favor, you can press star nine on your telephone if you're calling in on your phone. Or if you're listening on a device or watching on a device or a laptop, there is a raise hand button that you can press to be allowed to talk. Anybody in favor? All right, seeing none. Nope, hold on one second. Philip, can you hear me, Phil?
Okay.
Hello? Yep, name and address for the record, please.
I'm Phil Puma, Lee's Puma, one Eagle Road. Butters, we definitely support this project. Just to reiterate what everybody else has said, you know, it was a real eyesore for years. The contractors that bought it first were a disaster to work with. They had so many different plans. And Brian came in and just, uh, really presented a, a real nice project. And, uh, we're really happy that this is gonna go forward and we support it.
Thank you, Phil. Appreciate that. All right, is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor? All right, seeing none. Is there anybody that would like to speak in opposition? Um, I'm gonna repeat myself. If you're calling in on a telephone, you can press star nine. Or if you're watching on a device or laptop, you can, there's a raise hand button that you can press to be allowed to speak. Is there anybody that would like to speak in opposition? Okay, going once, opposition. We have, uh, naming, Kathy, can you hear me?
I can hear you, yes.
Name and address for the record, please.
Sure, thanks, Steve. This is Kathy Clancy. I live at seventy-eight High Poples Road with my husband and son. We've lived here for twenty-six years and we are right behind the ocean view in property. And I am conflicted about how to approach my comments to you. As my neighbor Mark Poole and said, those of us who are close to this property are faced with two less than ideal prospects. I should also point out that I own for Eagle Road, which directly abuts this property. So by speaking, you know, I picked, chose, I've chosen to pick to speak in opposition, but it's a pretty, um, awkward thing to speak in opposition when a house, if you guys turn this down, could be put right in front of both of my properties and destroy everything I love dearly about where I live. I use the word conflicted because the citing of this proposal is the most favorable for my home. And I've been told that if this proposal doesn't go through, a large two-family would be placed in front of my property. But preserving the character of Atlantic Road and the High Poples Harriet Road neighborhood is of concern to me. If this eleven-unit condo development was proposed anywhere else along Atlantic Road, I would still be here expressing my concern for this type of proposal that would set a troubling precedent. The two structures proposed are approximately fifteen thousand square feet each. As a comparison, the home formerly owned by Jane Fonzo is eighty-four hundred square feet. Homes along High Poples and Harriet Road are generally modest, single family homes with a few newer two-family houses. Further, I want to remind you of the wording paraphrased from the Gloucesters ordinance, zoning ordinance, our twenty low, medium density zoning district is intended to accommodate single family residential development and where appropriate, two-family and multifamily development. The intent of this district is to provide a transition from the rural districts to the high-density districts of the city. This proposal is a drastic departure from that zoning definition is, and is anything but modest or similar to the neighborhood. But I do understand why it's being proposed by this developer. Mr. Melanson is a very nice businessman and, and I will second what everybody's said. He has been very professional and we have enjoyed having him do the work in the neighborhood. I most definitely wish that the scale of this project was less, fewer units, less square feet, overall less scale, more green space. The alternative of building duplexes may have similar and equally less desirable implications. So as I said, I am conflicted. I will hope you will consider my additional concerns when you discuss this. The first is light pollution, which is a big issue with a development like this. The dark sky movement across the world advocates for a precautionary approach to outdoor lighting design. And I hope Gloucester has considered this aspect of the project. It would be a shame to not be able to see the amazing stars and other fascinating sights of night sky as this is an area on Atlantic Road, people come to view eclipses and meteors, meteor showers. Other safeguards I would like to see is that no additional parking or paving is allowed down the road, given the wetland implications and the added impact that additional cars would bring. Thank you for this opportunity to express my concerns to you. I know you take awarding a special permit very seriously and, um, and I just wanted to voice my concerns. So, uh, because I had concerns, I did not speak in favor, which is why I'm expressing those, um, at this time. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kathy. Um, I'm sure some of us took notes and we'll ask some of these questions. Um, all right, is there anybody else that would like to speak in opposition? Bill, can you hear me? Hello, Bill? Bill Kasdan?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Uh, Bill Kasdan, uh, thirty Lynx Road.
Go ahead.
Thanks for the opportunity. We've been, uh, up here, um, above the Ocean View property for almost twenty years. We have a connection to it. And, uh, two of our daughters were married and had their receptions at Ocean View. And I walk Atlantic Road just about every day. And, uh, I certainly have heard very favorable comments about the developer and the work he's put in. And I appreciate that and I appreciate that, uh, it's every developer's intent to maximize his return on his investment. The, the issue that I have is, is really similar to what Kathy Clancy mentioned. And that is that if, if, um, the bullet point three of one dot eight dot three is that it be consistent with the neighborhood character. This is really not a residential and commercial area. Atlantic Road is, uh, almost entirely single family homes, some large and some stately, some more modest. But the scale of what's being proposed is really, uh, I think, out of character with what's in the neighborhood. It's just one great big gobsmacking building. And I respect the efforts that Andrew has made to, uh, divide up the, uh, the front elevation and to make it look less imposing, but still, this is a great big structure. And I wonder if it might be possible to reduce that scale somewhat, in, in, in terms of trying to make it more consistent with what's in the neighborhood, uh, around it. Uh, and, and finally, I'm guessing that Attorney Eliasen was a little tongue in cheek about this project adding diversity to the community. I thank you very much for the opportunity to, uh, to make some comments here.
Thank you, Bill. Now, is there anybody else that would like to speak in opposition? Opposition going once. Opposition going twice. All right. So I will offer the, uh, the applicant a right to rebut if, um, if anybody would like to have a rebuttal. It's up to you guys. We're gonna, I'm sure, we're gonna have some counselor questions pretty soon.
Yes. I'd just like to address a couple of the issues with regard to the lighting, which seemed to be a concern of a couple of people. There is, um, a very detailed ordinance in the zoning ordinance with regard to lighting. And we will certainly comply with that. And I believe, um, its intent is to be dark sky lighting and be consistent with that. We did provide a lighting plan. But, uh, Mr. Melanson, of course, he has, as you've heard from almost everyone, even those in the opposition, has worked very well with the neighbors. And if they have any concerns with any of the lighting, he certainly would be willing to work with them on that. Um, I would like to point out that with single family and two-family homes, that ordinance doesn't apply. So there's a lot more restrictions with regard to a multifamily, um, lighting than there is in other developments. Also, with regard to the scale, I think it is important to remember that the zoning ordinance determines what that scale is and determines what the density will be. And the court, the highest court in Massachusetts, the Supreme Judicial Court, just recently, And the court, the highest court in Massachusetts, the Supreme Judicial Court, just recently made a determination confirming that, that it is to the zoning ordinance density rules that you look when you're deciding whether a project is too dense or not dense, or what its scale is. This project meets all the setback requirements and that's where you look at concerns of crowding. If additional buildings were added and these buildings were made smaller, which was what a prior developer had proposed, there would be less opportunity to preserve the views and in fact, the site would look a lot more crowded than it does now. If anyone who took the opportunity to go on the site visit, it was clear how far away from Atlantic Road the buildings are and also how far away from the High Poples neighborhood these buildings are. So I think the developer has done, has worked within the ordinance and actually made a much smaller development than would have been most economic for him. He could have done 16 units and he hasn't done that. He hasn't tried to max it out and I think that's a testament to him and I believe you heard that from the neighbors. And we're happy to answer any other questions that the counselors may have.
Okay, thanks. Madam Clerk, do we have any communications?
Yes, we received one communication around 3:00 PM this afternoon, which we were all copied on. And it's from Robert Parsons of 39 Harriet Road and he is in the opposition of this special city council permit.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. All righty, so now time for counselor questions. Is there anybody, any counselor questions? Counselor Pat?
Yes, good evening. And thank you for the presentation. Thank you for the commentary on both sides in support and in opposition. And one of the questions that came up in opposition was about additional parking. As we went through on our site visits and the presentations, my understanding is there was a requirement for 17 parking spaces and that you're providing 21. And I'm just going back history-wise, the first condominium development in Gloucester was over the Thowall condominiums and there were requirements put in that they were going to have X number of parking spaces. And over the next X number of years, they they went ahead and paved in some extra parking spaces, one two here, one there, one there, et cetera, to the point where they added about seven or eight spaces. And I just want to ask, not knowing what the zoning requirements have changed since then or whatever, but just like to ask the developer what pledges will be made as to maybe putting into the documents of the development that no additional parking spaces would be added at some time in the future.
Thank you, Barry. So who would like to answer that question?
Ryan, is that something you could answer?
Melanson?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. You know, if the council wants to put in anything that they think is appropriate to to alleviate that concern, I mean, our pledge is not to do that. Of course, I would lose, when I sell these, it would fall under an association and I will be gone.
Right.
Any language that you'd like to put into a permit that any extra parking would be prohibited unless it came back to the city council would be fine to me.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Melanson. As with your entire presentation and our communication with you, that has been, it seems to me that you've been willing to do whatever was necessary and I would, eventually when we come to, come to that point, maybe I could just add that in as a requirement and again, understanding that once this, if the project does go forward, that once things are built, that you would not be, you know, the king in making decisions like that going forward.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Counselor Gillman, did you have a question?
Thank you. I have a couple, but I'll only ask one and give my fellow counselors an opportunity to ask theirs. So my question is to Greg Catamatory, our planning director, and I appreciate him being on the call tonight. Per section 5.7.3, the department reviews for major project. I know that councils have all read our minutes of our past meeting and we had received letters of support from the City Building Department, the Engineering Department, Public Works, Public Health, and Planning Board. And the sixth matter was CONCOM. And we had a verbal approval and I was hoping that Planning Director Greg Catamatory can elaborate on that because I don't believe we have since received the written. And I believe that you are very clear, Greg, on what has been approved. So I was hoping that you could enlighten counselors on that from CONCOM. Thank you.
Sure. Good evening, counselors. I wasn't sure if, I think at the last P and D meeting, the meetings were such that the plans that were presented to you were consistent with the ones that were recommended by the planning board back in August and you received the report out from the planning board on, I think, September 16th, my memory serves. And the same plan also presented as revised and to the Conservation Commission. They have since issued an order of conditions for the project. So I think that's effectively their response and report out to you that they're in their approval of that project. I thought there may have been an email correspondence from Jim, but I think that's, that's pretty much a testament of the Conservation Commission's disposition on the project at this point.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you, Greg. Bill, do you want to keep asking your questions? That's fine.
I don't want to be in the doghouse for doing that because I get myself in trouble.
Okay.
Thank you. I would also like an explanation from Attorney Ellison on the the affordable housing unit and how that would work. I know that we've gently touched upon that and some of the specifics are not there, but if you could just enlighten us briefly on how that would be handled, that would be wonderful.
Certainly. There is a requirement in the ordinance for inclusionary housing and there is a requirement for this multifamily that one of the units be affordable. And it has to be, I believe, at 80% of the area median income. And Mr. Melanson is going to do that. He's not going to seek any sort of waiver or payment in lieu or anything like that. He is going to provide the unit.
How's that, Bill? We'll circle back to you if you have any other questions.
Okay, thank you, counselor.
Is there any other counselor questions? All right, let's circle back to, let's circle back to Counselor Gillman.
Great. So the committee report on a motion by Counselor Gill-
Hold on. No, yeah, we're still on the public hearing part. We're still on the questions. I thought you may have had, you may have had another question.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm cool. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So seeing that there is no more Counselor, Counselor O'Hara?
Thank you. Just a question, I think Mr. Melanson probably can answer this. In speaking with constituent who was very pleased with, with the design and being able to work with Mr. Melanson and his team. The question was, does Mr. Melanson have any plans on putting curbing along Atlantic Road?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Well, we haven't had any discussion about that with anybody on Public Works or we've met with engineering, Public Works, that has never come up. I know we've talked about drainage and swales and how we're going to build the swales along Atlantic Road. So John Moran might be able to address that a little bit more accurately, but I'm not sure that that would work with the design we have. It's not that I'd be opposed to it. If it was something that Public Works thought made sense to them, I'm sure we would incorporate that somehow, but none of the plans, none of the drainage swales, none of the conversations we've had up to date with any department head has included or talked about anything to do with granite curbing.
Okay, I think.
Just if I might add, that would all be under the control of the Department of Public Works. It's not something that we could propose or do without their permission.
That's, yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna say the same thing and I think the property line stops before the actual street starts, right? Because I know a lot of the properties out there. Yeah, they have the boulders out front that are kind of in the public space. So so I think the answer is no, Jamie, from what I take it.
I appreciate the response. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other counselor questions? Counselor Gillman?
Thank you. My final question again is probably to Attorney Ellison. So I had the benefit of being on all three site visits, so I definitely repeated the tour many times. So one of the issues that we brought up as a question from one of the abutters was regarding the alternatives to what could happen on five individual sites. And you showed us very specifically where some of those sites were. I was wondering if you wouldn't mind maybe uploading that slide, if that's not too difficult, through permission with, from Council President, and just kind of explain where that, where those five properties are and how those five lots are buildable to a two-family. If that's possible, you can just explain it. If that's, is easy, we probably don't need to show that because I think we, most of us attended the site visit.
I believe I do have the slide if you want to give me a moment to find it, but essentially there were under the, in this area, there could be five, five subdivision lots that could each hold a duplex with two units. So that would be 10 units. And the way it would have to be laid out is first of all, they would be much more spread apart than the multifamily units and two of the buildings would be directly in front of the properties off of High Poples and Eagle Road, which I believe is what Ms. Clancy was referring to. And then the others would be sprinkled along the back and along the wetlands side. So we do believe that even though that alternative was looked at, that it wasn't the best alternative for this site or the neighborhood because it would more unduly infringe upon the neighbors and their existing views and their privacy than the multifamily would.
Thank you.
Okay, any other, any other counselor questions? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and call for the committee report. Counselor Gillman?
Thank you, counselor. On a motion by Counselor Gillman, seconded by Counselor Holgram, the Planning and Development Committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council grant to 171 Atlantic Road LLC a special council permit, special council permit 202003 for the property located at Atlantic Road number 163, formerly part of number 171 comma assessor's map 73 lot 41, a portion of former map 73 lot 26, zoned R20 pursuant to Gloucester zoning ordinance section 2.3.1, section 8, conversion to or new multifamily or apartment dwelling, seven or more dwelling units and 5.7.5 major project for 11 or more dwelling units to construct multifamily housing containing 11 units divided between two buildings. This permit is made on the basis of plans and elevations dated February 14th, 2020 and submitted to the city clerk on February 19th, 2020, entitled multifamily site redevelopment in Gloucester, Massachusetts, Lot 5-163, Atlantic Road. Prepared from Melanson Development Townhouse Community 161, 165, 171, Atlantic Road, Gloucester, Mass. And Melanson Townhouses, Atlantic Road, Gloucester, Mass. 01930. And amended plans and elevations dated August 6th, 2020 and submitted to the city clerk's office on August 11th, 2020, entitled multifamily site redevelopment in Gloucester, Mass., Lot 5-163, Atlantic Road. Townhouse Community, comma 161, comma 165, comma 171, Atlantic Road, Gloucester, Mass. Melanson Townhouses, Atlantic Road, Gloucester, Mass. 01930. Subject to new information and/or debate that results from the public hearing, this special council permit is deemed to be in harmony with the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance and I so move.
Second.
All righty, it's been moved and seconded. So we're at council discussion. Is there anything? Is there any council discussion? Counselor Holgram and then Counselor Pat.
I want to thank Mr. Melanson and his team very much for all of their efforts over this time. I want, and I want to-
Jen, we lost you. We lost you audio. We can't hear you. You're not on mute.
I'm sorry, my internet, my internet is unstable. Okay. Did, okay, well, basically I was just saying thank you. And I'm going to be supporting this this evening. I know that it is a tough thing for some of the people in the neighborhood with regard to the number of units, but I would rather see an 11-unit multifamily complex than five duplexes on that property. And I, I believe over these past few months, Mr. Melanson has shown us his commitment to this community and his ability to work with people in the neighborhood to the best of his ability. So thank you very much. I intend to support this special permit.
Thank you, counselor. So just, just a reminder that under section 1.8.3, the the logistics of that, that's what we have to make sure we have our vote on this evening. So if you are going to support this, you need to explain why you are. And if you're not going to support this or you're in opposition, please support why you're not. Counselor Holgram, you basically, we heard the gist of things, so we got it. Counselor Pat and then Counselor Nolan and then Counselor Gillman.
Okay. Again, I would also like to support the project and I wanted to thank Mr. Melanson and the whole group for working with the neighbors. I do believe that it meets the criteria for the character of the neighborhood. I do believe it makes, it means that it will also be a plus for the community. And I'm not sure when it would be appropriate for me to make an amendment. Would it be appropriate at this moment or do I wait till after we've discussed a little further?
You can, you can make the amendment now.
Okay.
But before you make, I'm not telling you, you don't have to, but I think what Mr. Melanson's done with the neighborhood, making sure that the, you know, reduced height, density and everything else he's done, the parking area, I mean, I don't see it's going to be an issue, but if you want to, if you feel like you need to add this.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying is that I think he has done a wonderful job. And while Mr. Melanson will not be there, if this project is approved, when built, when it's done, I would like to make a motion for an amendment that the requirement, which is for 17 spaces and they are providing 21, that I make a motion that going forward, if this project is approved, that 21 parking spaces is the limit going forward and- and that they will not be able in the future to ask for more.
Second.
And I so.
Second.
All right, so it's been moved and seconded. All right, discussion on the amendment. Council Cox?
I don't really like the language that he can't ask for more. I think asking is a right in our process, but adding more, I think, would be the appropriate language. Barry?
Sure. Thank you for maybe clarifying, et cetera, and I'm happy to change it to that wording.
All right, so hold on a second. We get, we get into the weeds without doing this correct way. So we have an amendment, we have a second. So if you want to amend.
The amendment.
The amendment. We have to make another amendment to that, to ask that he may be permitted to come to City Council for future parking spots, or he may have to ask, you know, however you'd like to word it.
Yes.
I would like to make an amendment to change Counsel Pet's wording from ask to add.
I'll second.
Okay. So we have an amendment to an amendment. So the discussion on the amendment to the amendment. All right. So I agree with the, my discussion is that I agree with the amendment on the amendment. I think it's, it's totally fine for Mr. Melanson to come before the City Council again to ask to have more parking spots. I think that's his right, and I think that I, I'll support both amendments to that. Okay? So any other discussion on the amendment to the amendment? All right, we'll take a, we'll take a roll call vote real quick. Council LeBlanc, yes? Council McCarthy?
I guess so.
Right? Counsel.
I really think you ought to at least have a read back on what the amendment is, because I don't.
Before a second.
All right, so it's been, all right, before we do this, it's been, it's been motion and second. The amendments, the amendment to the amendment would be to, that the Melanson Group or anybody that would ask for any additional parking spaces, come before the City Council to re, to, to ask for permission to add any more parking spots to the site. Is that correct?
Okay, I'll agree with that. Yes.
Okay. All right, so Council LeBlanc, Council McCarthy, yes? Council Nolan?
Yes.
Council O'Hara?
Yes.
Counsel Pat?
Yes.
Counsel Cox?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman?
Yes.
Counsel Holgram?
Yes.
All right, now back to the amendment. So we had the first amendment. Like I said, this is, we, we don't want to get in the weeds with this, we want to make sure this is done right. Any other discussion on Barry's amendment to the motion? All right, seeing none, Council for the amendment to the main motion, Council LeBlanc? Yes? Council McCarthy?
Yes.
Council Nolan?
Yes.
Council O'Hara?
Yes.
Counsel Pat?
Yes.
Counsel Cox?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman?
Yes.
Counsel Holgram?
Yes.
Okay, so both amendments to the main motion pass on a roll call vote of eight in favor, one absent. Back to the main motion, any other discussion on that? Counsel Holgram chimed in, Counsel Nolan?
Yeah, I, I do want to thank Mr. Melanson for the work he's done with the neighbors. When this all started, it could have been a real horror show with that piece of property, and it could have been devastating to the looks, the character of the neighborhood. The time that was taken, with lighting, with moving the buildings, with taking a respective view for everybody. I believe they did a great job, and I wish we could work forward more with people like Mr. Melanson on projects in the city of Gloucester. I think it does fit the character of the neighborhood, and I, I'm very happy with this project, and I will be supportive tonight.
Thank you, Sean. Counsel Gilman?
Thank you, Counselor. So in looking at the requisite criteria for granting the special counsel permit, some of the comments that I wanted to make was, under 5.7.3, we have received supporting evidence from all the departments that they were comfortable with this, and that's a criteria for special counsel permit for a major project. Next, the planning board reviewed this, and on August 20th, they voted seven in favor, zero opposed. And that's also criteria that we're looking at. And then under 5.7.5, the major project criteria that has been met, including that is, include, includes the direct access from Atlantic Road, which is a collector's street. It is connected to the municipal sewer. The site plan indicates that the required access points, drainage and utilities serving each building, is appropriate, that there's no access from minor streets, and that the lighting avoids glare, that the multifamily is located in a R20 residential zone, and the project complies with all dimensional and density requirements. Under 1.8.3, I just wanted to emphasize that it is a residential development in an R20 zone neighborhood, which is consistent, more consistent with a residential neighborhood than the previous motel and function hall usage. B, that the traffic flow will enter in only one way and leave the project the same way. It includes a 20-foot driveway with a turnaround, so there's no backing out onto the public way. And there is a gated access over Eagle Road for emergencies. C, the adequacies of utilities and public services, public service and utilities will be updated, and the utility consumption is anticipated to be less than prior use. And E, the quality of the natural environment, improvements to the wetlands, which were discussed at length, drainage issues will be repaired, and the water will flow more freely into the large wetland areas to the east, and that the fiscal impact will increase value, add residential tax income to the city. I also wanted to mention to everyone that although Counsel Memhardt is not here tonight, in the meeting of September 16th, he expressed appreciation regarding the team efforts to address neighborhood concerns, to reduce height and mass, and address sightlines, and he thinks it will be a dramatic improvement to the neighborhood. He also sent us all an email several days ago, asking us to make sure that we made that commitment as word, word one counselor, he wanted to make sure that we shared that. So those are the reasons that I felt compelled to discuss in terms of my opinion of this project, and I just wanted to be clear with the requisite criteria. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Counsel McCarthy?
Yes. I think Mr. Melanson's done a great job with the neighbors and the neighborhood. He had some initial opposition and was able to facilitate the neighbors, for the most part. This was a pla- approved by a planning board. As was pointed out earlier in the meeting, these 11 units are replacing some 35 hotel units that were there prior. It does have major access from Atlantic Road. It does have a turnaround that's been vetted by our fire department. It's been vetted by all city agencies that it's required to be vetted by. It exceeds the zoning requirements for the area. He did reduce the height to accommodate neighbors. It exceeds the lot area requirements. I don't see that it would cause any adverse traffic to the area. Utilities are more than adequate, the way the plan is drawn up. His drainage is going to improve the area. Aesthetically, I think it's, it's very appealing as compared to especially what was there prior. I don't think it affects the neighborhood character, and it will have potential increasing tax revenue for the city of Gloucester. And for all those reasons I've cited, I'm going to support the project tonight.
Thank you, John. Any other counselors? Counsel Cox?
Thank you. Everything that's been said tonight has been spot on with why I'm going to support this tonight. I mean, the first is working with the neighborhood, and I, I'm going to give credit where credit's due, and that's you hired a great attorney. She knows the city, she, she knows our process, and I believe that she definitely helped you guys navigate the system. As a developer, your willingness to cooperate and change things is really important to us, and I appreciate that. So it's important to the entire city, so we appreciate that. The improved drainage, improved traffic flow, the height change, everything. I, I don't feel like this is going to stand out any more than any of the other bigger houses along this route. And there is a definite mix of commercial and residential on this road. So all those reasons are why I'm going to be supporting this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Anybody else? Counsel Pat?
Yeah, just to reiterate, I want to truly thank Mr. Melanson and his team, not only Attorney Melanson, but the architect, the engineers, for working with the neighbors. This is, has become the most pleasant experience for a development because of their willingness to meet not only all the criteria that we're required to judge by, but because they're working with their neighborhood. And I want to thank, I'm going to be supporting this as a major plus for our community, and I thank them.
Thank you, Barry. Is there anybody else? All right, I think I got to everybody, so it's my turn. I'll also go to support, Counsel O'Hara?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank the developer, not to repeat what has already been said, but I believe he has met, met the requirements of the special permit, but more importantly, he has met the, I believe, the acceptance of the neighborhood as a whole in talking with constituents. He's, he's worked with them, and I think most of all are happy with the development. So I, again, a sincere thank you to Mr. Melanson and his team for their efforts. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Jamie. All right, so I agree with everybody, I'm going to support this evening for what everybody stated this evening. I think Mr. Melanson's done a great job. I think Attorney Ellison has done a great job. Architecture, the site, the engineering, everything, everything is, is very, very well done. So kudos to you, your team, for getting this neighborhood harmony, the traffic flow, the lighting, no negative effect on the neighborhood. Everybody that has stated why they're supporting this this evening, I couldn't agree more. And it's a pleasure working with Mr. the Melanson Group, and we're looking forward to more developers like you to come to the, to our city and listen to what the neighborhood has to say, and to Attorney Ellison for, for steering this group in the right direction. So I can't say enough about what a great job you guys have done, so I will be supporting this this evening. All right. If there's no other council discussion, I will call for the roll call. Counselor LeBlanc? Yes? Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counsel Pat? Counsel Pat?
Yes.
All right. Counsel Cox?
Yes.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman?
Yes.
And Counsel Holgram?
Yes.
All right. Special counsel permit passes on a roll call vote of eight in favor, one absent. Great job, everyone. Great job, counsel. Appreciate everybody there this evening on the Melanson staff to, to do the right thing for the community. So we appreciate that.
Thank you very much, counselors. We, we appreciate it greatly.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Good night. Madam Clerk, we have the next order of business, please.
Order of Business is public hearing 2020-010, special city council permit 2020-002, Essex Avenue, number 99A, map 216 lot 126, Gloucester zoning ordinance section 1.8.3, standard to be applied, section 3.1.6 parentheses B, building heights in excess of 35 feet, section 2.3.4 parentheses 13, marine-related service, storage or repair limited primarily in the MI District to commercial fishing vessels, section 5.5, low layer requirements, section 5.5.2, and section 5.5.3 in the EB District.
Okay, so I'm going to open the public hearing and continue this till October 27th, 2020. All righty, and just to give an update, we have 12 panelists, and we have 11 people in attendance for the remainder of the meeting. Madam Clerk, we have the next order of business, please.
Next order is business for council vote. City Council Order 2020-012. Counsel Pat, Counsel Cox, and Counsel LeBlanc, ordered that the City Council request that the state legislators file a home petition, and based on said petition, the general court enact a special act regarding seasonal alcoholic licenses.
All right, so we had this on the agenda a couple weeks ago, so we have this up for a vote this evening. Counsel Cox, and Counsel Pat, would you like to spearhead this before we get into this?
Counsel Pat, it was your idea. I just did the fancy word working.
We do have an objective, so I'll read the objective. So the city of Gloucester.
All right. I'm sorry, I'm not sure what's going on, I lost.
Okay. I'm going to read the objective for the home rule petition that we're, we're asking for. So the objective for the, for the city of Gloucester is seeking a temporary relief of the requirements of the Mass General Law Chapter 138, Section 12, Section 15, and Section 17, so that a result of the ongoing state of emergency as declared by the governor on March 10th, 2020, those establishments within the city who have been issued one seasonal section, there's 12 licensing, authorizing the sale of alcoholic beverages to be drunk on the premises, and subsection two, those establishments who have been issued seasonal sections 15, authorizing the sale of alcohol beverages, not to be drunk on the premises, may continue to sell alcoholic beverages pursuant to their seasonal license from January 16th, 2021, through March 31st, 2021. So that's our objective, is just try to give the, the seasonal license holders a smidge extra to stay open and hopefully stay in business. I know that there are a lot of businesses that are really hurting. I know that there's a lot of businesses downtown that have paid an extraordinary amount of money to have their, their liquor license. But at this point, I think we are all in the same boat, that we all need to support each other and each other's businesses to maybe have these seasonal licenses be open for another, an extra three months out of the season to hopefully recoup some of their losses over the COVID pandemic. So that's basically what it is in a nutshell for, for me. Counsel Cox, Counsel Pat, was there any, any other counselor questions or would like to add anything?
Well, I mean, the, Barry had the idea. He approached Senator Tarr about trying to get the governor to do it on a statewide basis, and it didn't, it didn't pass through the legislator, legislation that it was included with. So that left it up for the local municipalities to do what we're doing now, and that's to create a home rule petition to ask them to take it up. They basically have until January 15th to pass or deny this request. It's a very, very tight timeframe, so, you know, I don't even know if they'll have time to take it up with November and December holding so many holidays, but it's worth a try. I think Barry's idea was a great one. You know, I, I'm conflicted because the year-round res- year-round businesses pay a lot of money for their licenses, but like you said, Counsel LeBlanc, it's, you know, we all need to try to bail out each other's boats, because we're definitely in the same storm, but we're not in the same boat. So I, I think helping each other in this time of crisis. I specifically wrote the measure stating that it would only be from January 16th, 2021, through March 31st, 2021. So it would have no long-term effect on our marijuana licenses, because our marijuana- because our marijuana licenses are tied to our liquor licenses. So this is a temporary measure. This does not give the seasonal license holder a year-round license by any means. They will continue to have a seasonal license the following year. They will have to close on January 16 through March 31. This only allows them to be open for those, basically, two and a half months.
Thank you, Counselors. So Barry, I know you, I know you bumped off for a little bit. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I've come on and off a number of times, so I'm not sure what was said, but I did try to speak.
I'm just going to give you a quick update. We're just having a discussion on, on what we're trying to do. Go ahead. Still can you hear me, Barry?
Okay, all, all I was trying to add is that I did try to speak to as many seasonal liquor license holders as I could and year-round license holders. And I did get comments from three year-round license holders that they were in support of doing this for this one year to help, just like we gave help to others, et cetera. And I think when we asked for the communications, there were some that we received in support and some others that said they were going to, but apparently didn't. But that, that's basically my, my addition. I'm not sure, like I said, what was said, but that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Councilor Holmgren?
I'm very happy to support this, and thank you three for bringing it forward. I have one question that was brought to me by one of the business, businesses who holds the temporary license, or the seasonal rather. Do we know what the HR number is for this petition when it goes to the state? And I don't think that we would until it goes to the legislature. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
That's correct.
Thank you. Okay, I will, I will give that information back to her. Thank you very, very much.
All right, Councilor Gilman?
I like this and concept very much. I do have two questions. Number one, does anybody know what the permit fee is for the year-round licensed person? I would just be interested in that. And my second, can I, can I ask a second question?
Yeah.
Hold on. The year-round licenses are, there's not a fee? Are you talking about the seasonal license or the year-round license?
The year-round license, that the, that the seasonal one would not have to pay because of this home rule petition.
That, that's not necessarily the case. That's not how it works. So a year-round license is purchased. It's an asset. So someone could pay $50,000 for a year-round. So a seasonal is a flat fee. I can certainly look it up for you real quick, but it's, it's a flat fee.
Councilor Cox, we do have Melissa Prince on the, on the.
Oh, good.
Call here. Melissa, do you know the answer to Belle's question?
So what I can say is every year, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, every year, a license is renewed. We're actually going to start the renewal purpose, process next month. There is a different fee for a seasonal fee versus a year-round fee. So there is an annual renewal fee. However, as Melissa stated, year-round fees are, year-round licenses are owned. So it's the renewal fee that you would be referring to if you're trying to find a difference in price.
Okay. And, and can you tell us what that is?
Yep, and so there's, there's four different kinds of licenses because the beer and wine licenses are different than the full alcohol. But a seasonal, I'm looking at the list right now, an all-annual license is $2,250. A, no, I'm sorry, it's $2,400 with a common Vex, so about $2,300. A seasonal license is $2,000. So there's a difference of a couple hundred dollars. If you're talking about malt and wine, the difference is a seasonal malt and wine is $1,000 and an all license is $1,980. So there are different prices versus seasonal and year-round. And then it's different prices versus beer and wine versus all alcohol.
Councilor Gilman?
Thank you, Melissa, for being on the call and helping us. Appreciate it. So just a question for Councilor Cox and Councilor Pat in terms of this, this home rule petition. So my understanding is that the seasonal business owners that would take advantage of this would not pay a, a fee. Is that correct?
They've already paid a fee for.
They would not pay.
But it would not, there would not be anything additional.
Oh.
Right.
That, that's just what I wanted to understand.
Correct. They already have, yeah. They already have their fee for their seasonal license. And for this, this one time, for the adding on of the, what would have been their off period, they would not be charged an additional fee.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Any more council questions? Let's see, Melissa Prince has her hand up. Melissa, do you have another question? I mean, do you have something to?
Yeah, so annual licenses are renewed every year on, in November and December to start the new year. So it seems to me if you are adding January, February, March, and April on to the seasonals, then that's next year. So I think to assume that they've already paid for what may come if your vote is in favor of them, I would say that that's not the case. In other words, the, the fees that have already been paid expire in December. Anyone who wants to renew their license has to do it by the end of this year for next year.
So if this passes, they would definitely need to see you before the end of December to renew their, their license.
That would be the case if you, as a council, make the decision that everyone is going to pay the same price.
Well, they would be renewing. No, they're not, that's not at, at all what we're saying. It's not a year-round license. They're a seasonal license holder, and we're adding an exemption for them to remain open for that period of time. We're not changing them from a seasonal to a year-round license.
No, I understand completely. We would just need guidance on what you would want us to do because it's, it's, it's operating eight months of the year versus 12, or seven and a half months.
You said earlier.
I understand what you're saying, though. It depends if you look at it as a matter of what type of license they have or how long they're operating. That's all I'm saying. So we would just need some clarification and whatever you decide.
Okay, the fee is based on the type of license, so that's how I'm going to definitely refer to it. My conversations with the ABCC, they, they had no objection over this. And they didn't, it was proposed from the governor, too. It's their, their rules and their policing would still be in effect. So I guess what I'm asking you, based on the information that you provided tonight, is we want to make sure that these seasonal license holders, if this is passed at the state level, that they are sure to come before you, before December to renew their license and pay the fee before the end of December for it to be effective for them.
My answer to that is yes. They all have to apply no later than November 30 to renew. So it will, it'll all be done probably before the decision is even made at the state level.
Probably, yes. I would hope so.
So my, my, my thought process on this is to extend their seasonal license till March 31. That was, that's my thought process on this. So I know, I mean, we're, we're, we're under the gun on this right here. So we're trying to push this through legislative, legislation. So if this goes up to the, you know, if they don't get to vote on this before the end of November and they're looking, you know, first week in December, second week in December, I mean, that's kind of impossible for these people to apply for their application if they're not sure that they're going to get it yet. So what I'm thinking is we just, we're asking for an extension to their seasonal license to what they have for the 2020 season, to extend it out to the March 30, 2021.
But what Melissa's saying is that their 2020 license ends on December 31, 2020. So they would have to, I'm assuming regardless of what happens here tonight or with the legislator, they're going to want to go ahead and process their renewal by the deadline of our local licensing board, which is November 30. So I don't think, I don't think it's going to be a problem.
Yeah.
But I do appreciate Melissa clarifying the, where the, the lines are drawn in regards to beginning and end of a seasonal license.
Right, and I do see that we have a couple of business owners downtown on the call this evening. So that way, they'll be able to pass on our information. So everybody listening that has their seasonal license, if you can pass on this information to the other restaurants to let them know, we'll do our best to pass on this information also. So, all right. Councilor Holmgren, do you have a question? Oh, okay. Council McCarthy?
Yeah, Steve, just to clarify, I think what you said is correct. The home rule petition is asking for the extension of their 2020 license to go to March of 2021. Now, they'd still renew their next year's license as required, but I would imagine that the home rule petition would, would legally just extend their license to March 31 as opposed to giving them a new license starting in January.
Right. That's, that's my understanding.
And I would support that. And I mean, we've made, you know, and I mean, I haven't had any negative calls or emails from any of the full-timers and, you know, we've made exemptions for the full-timers. We've let them know on MHC. I think, I think everybody's just trying to do what they can to make sure these businesses don't fail. So I would be supportive.
Yeah, that's what we don't want to do, is we don't want to see people, you know, losing their, their, everything they've got for this, you know, to extend, extend this out just a little bit more to help. So.
Yeah.
All right. Melissa's got her hand up again. Let's see. Melissa, do you have another?
Well, I, I just want to be clear. So on the annual license expiration date, so all of the licenses are going to expire on December 31.
Yes.
They have until November 30 to apply to renew them, and we'll get them all renewed before December 31. It sounds to me like you're not extending this year to go into next year. You're allowing next year to start earlier for them. So I just want to be clear on that.
Yes.
Because regardless of what anyone decides, all their licenses by law expire on the 31st and have to be renewed, and their paperwork has to be asked no later than November 30. So to me, it's an extension of the beginning of their year, not extending the, the end of their year.
Yes, okay. That's right. Yeah, we're going to try to, yes, she's right.
Yeah. With that new information, I will review the objective in the home rule petition to make sure that we don't have any extending the 2020 season, but extending the 2021 season before it goes to legal.
Okay. Councilor Gilman?
So the, so the draft objectives that has been put forward, we just would want to change, may continue to be extended, if I'm not mistaken, if we want to make that motion tonight. Is that correct?
No.
No?
No. So it would, it would jumpstart the 2021 season in advance for the people, for the seasonal liquor license holders. We're not going to extend the 2020 license because Melissa stated that it expires December 31. So we're asking permission to give an advance on the 2021 license to start earlier.
So for the record, there's no language in the draft language that says anything about 2021 versus 2020. All it says is that the City of Gloucester may temporarily extend the issuance of a seasonal license, Section 12 licenses authorizing the sale of alcoholic beverages to be drunk on the premises from January 16, 2021 through March 31, 2021.
Okay, so maybe, maybe that's where we want to change it to.
There's no change necessary.
Okay.
Right, that's, the word, the wording itself is already sufficient. Melissa, Texaser Prince is correct that the licenses expire on the 31st of December. But what we're talking about is, in reality, it doesn't sound that way, but we're talking about beginning their next season early, basically, on January 16. Where they're, even though their license would have expired on the 31st, their date normally that they would have to close would have been January 15 of the following year. And all, as Melissa Cox has just, the Councilor Cox has just said, this is basically just extending the start of their 2021 season.
Yes, jumpstarting it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, is there any more council discussion? So everybody's clear? So we're asking state legislation to give an advance on the 2021 license for a couple of months, for three months, three, two and a half months, basically, is what it is. Okay, I'm going to support it because I think it's great for the businesses. And like I said, we're all trying to float to stay alive. And I think that any little help with all the businesses would be, you know, a positive. You know, we're the, we're the legislators of the city. So we have to make sure that we're looking out for the businesses. If this is something we have to do, I think this is a good, a step in the right direction. All right, so does everybody understand what we're voting on? All right, so I will call for the roll call. Councilor LeBlanc? Yes? Council McCarthy?
Yes.
Councilor Nolan?
Yes.
Council O'Hara?
Yes.
Councilor Pat?
Yes.
Councilor Cox?
Yes.
Councilor Gilman?
Yes.
Councilor Holmgren?
Yes.
Motion passes on a roll call vote of eight in favor, one absent. All right, Counselors, thank you. Thank you, Melissa Prince, for being here for any clarifications. We appreciate you taking time out of your busy evening to guide us through this and teach us a little bit about liquor licenses. Madam Clerk, we have the, oh, we have one more. We have a warrant for the November 3 state election. So I will entertain a motion to.
So moved.
All right.
Second.
Moved and seconded, and I will call. I'd like to make a motion to adopt the warrant for the November 3, 2020 state election.
Second.
And seconded, my bad. So we've already, everybody understand what we're voting for, obviously? Councilor LeBlanc? Yes? Council McCarthy?
Yes.
Councilor Nolan?
Yes.
Council O'Hara?
Yes.
Councilor Pat?
Yes.
Councilor Cox?
Yes.
Councilor Gilman?
Yes.
And Councilor Holmgren?
Yes.
Motion passes on a roll call vote of eight in favor, one absent. All right, is there any requests to the mayor? Councilor Cox?
I just, if you guys see election signs on public property, please report it to Mike Hale. There's been several sightings throughout town. I unfortunately caught Mike today, and I asked him if the guys could keep an eye out for that stuff, but it's been raining nonstop all day. So I don't know if they got to the places that I received phone calls about yesterday. So if you guys see him, just let DPW know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other council requests of the mayor? Councilor Holmgren?
I don't have a request, but I just have to thank Councilor Nolan for the incredible amount of work he has done over the past couple of weeks with regard to the West Gloucester train station. And I want to thank Senator Tar as well and Ted Costa for being so approachable for the neighborhood. And I also want to thank Councilor Cox and Councilor Nolan and Chief Conley for their work doing outreach for the West Gloucester firing range. It has been very busy for everybody, and I, I just, I really appreciate the teamwork. So thank you.
Thank you, John.
Do you have a cure for poison ivy?
Yeah, don't go in it.
No, I don't, but goats, goats.
Yeah.
It's a little late. It's on my ankles.
Oh, no.
Don't scratch it. Any other council requests of the mayor? All right, seeing none. Kudos to Cox and Councilor Nolan for their, their outreach this past week. When it rains, of course, just like today, seems like everything comes down all at once. So great job, you two.
Like, this is our usual slow time of the year, and it's not this year, so.
Everybody's home. All right, so everybody, great job this evening. It was a good council meeting. Thank you, everybody in the audience, and everybody that has a seasonal license that is on the. Thank you, everybody in the audience, and everybody that has a seasonal license that is on the call this evening. Make sure we translate our discussion this evening to the other business owners. We're going to try to get everything that we discussed personally back out to everybody with the councilors that we have. And we're looking forward to helping all the small businesses, not just the seasonal licenses. So if anybody needs help, just please let us know. We'll see what we can do.
I'm going to go out to the paper and try to get an article on that as soon as possible, so everybody knows.
Yeah.
Excellent.
All right, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
All right, Counsel LeBlanc? Yes. Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counsel Pat?
Yes.
Counsel Cox?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman?
Yes.
Counsel Holmgren?
Yes.
All right, awesome job, everybody. Good night, and thank you.
Love, Sal. Good night, thank you.
Good night, everybody.